Welcome all to the City of Middletown Planning Board Meeting for the month of March 2022. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have to do a little housekeeping first for our transcriptionist. Mr. Numcheck is absent this evening, and present this evening is Mr. Welch, our Building Inspector, Mr. Atkins, our Fire Inspector. And the first thing we need to make sure of is that anyone here for the first time this evening, the parents, is considered preliminary hearing, and the Planning Board may or may not choose to act or vote on those applications tonight. First on the agenda is the approval of the February 2nd, 2022 Planning Board Minutes. I need a motion to accept Ms. Witt, a second, Mr. Britto. Any discussion? Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next on the agenda is Mr. Al-Wahani. Oh, I'm sorry, forgot. We even put it down on paper, didn't we? A slight adjustment to the agenda. Anthony Davos, 19 Preston Street Auto Repair Shop. He actually emailed in his six-month extension due to plans and funding. He has to ask for a six-month extension. So I'll need a motion to accept his six-month extension. Yes, I'm sorry, Ms... Motion?
I'll move, yeah.
Okay. Ms. Houston, motion. Second, Mr. Britto. Discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, sorry about that. Next up, Wally Al-Rahani, 207 Dulson Avenue Deli/Grill Shop. This was a gentleman that was carried over from last month due he did not have his mailings. Okay? Ms. Hanson, is the applicant online?
Yes, the applicant is online.
Okay.
And he just needs to unmute himself on his end, and he'll be able to speak with you.
Do we have the mailings?
Ms. Tu, we have the mailings, correct? Okay, thank you. Mr. Al-Rahani, are you there?
Mr. Al-Rahani, you just have to unmute yourself on your end to be able to speak.
Hi.
How you doing?
Can you hear me?
Good, just...
Yeah, hi, how's it going, guys? How's it going? Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Board, I'm Wally Al-Rahani. And as last meeting, you guys know, we talked about what was the plans for the deli and the grill, and I didn't have the minutes. I first want to like, just want to clear things about last time regarding like, you know, the clerk, Martina, if it was her fault. And it wasn't. It was actually like, you know, I just want to clear things that she did everything that needed to be done to be helpful. It's just, you know, it's just a misunderstanding from my end, and I didn't do enough. So I just want to clear that up because it's not fair to her.
Well, thank you for stating that. We appreciate that.
Yeah, sure. Other than that, so I'll recap like what I... What's like our plan, if that's okay?
That's fine.
Okay, so the plan is, you know, to build a deli/Grill right over there in Dulson Avenue. We are planning, you know, to open seven days a week, most likely close like before midnight. In terms of like the seating, we are going to have like maybe just a small bar table by the window, just, you know, for people just to like undergo. Other than that, we are, you know, we're... We'll do anything that needs to be required to get this done. And so it's up to, you know, it goes back to you guys or whatever. We're willing to do whatever necessary.
Okay, thank you for that. We're going to open the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to step forward and comment on this application? Please do. No one... Any... Anything in writing, Ms. Tu? Anyone on the telephone? Ms. Hanson, anyone online?
Not at this time.
Okay, we'll go to the board for any comments, questions, or concerns. Okay?
Theron, have you looked at it?
Yeah, myself and Walter have taken a look at it. There's no issues out there.
And just so the applicant knows, your occupancy will be truly determined by the Middletown Fire Department, just so you know.
Okay.
Okay. All right, I'll go back to the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to speak? Ms. Hanson, do we have anybody else online?
We do not.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing and move on to the board one more time for any questions, comments, or concerns. There being none, I'm going to move on to a resolution. On the resolution...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just as part of the resolution, does this have to be referred to the county?
Not 100% sure, but we are going to do that. You'll see in our resolutions now, we have to include the County of Orange when there's any type of deli, restaurant, kitchen, food preparation. This was from the Orange County Planning Department and the Health Department. So we always knew that any one of our approvals, if there's a kitchen or something, they have to get the approval of the Department of Health. But now they are stepping it up, and we must include it in our resolution.
And the applicant has to submit plans to the Health Department?
Right. So Mr. Al...
Yes.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, yes, any like required licenses from town, county, or, you know, the state will make sure, you know, to be on top of it and to get everything, you know, licensed.
Okay. If there's ever a question, I'm sure Ms. Tu can help you. This is kind of new, so the DPW and the Fire Department are probably just finding out about it, as I'm telling you. But that's new, okay?
Okay.
So put your right...
I'll, you know, keep in touch with Ms. Tu, and, you know, we'll... We'll make sure we get that done.
Correct. Basically, for the Planning Board going forward, anything that we see in the preliminary that has, as stated, we'll have to tell the applicant that they have to submit plans directly to the Orange County Department of Health. All right. Excuse me. On the resolution, 207 Dulson Avenue for a deli/Grill Shop with proposed hours daily, 5:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight. It will be subject to the City of Middletown DPW and City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of the Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits to follow the permitting process, codes, and ordinances of the City of Middletown, the State of New York, and the County of Orange, if applicable. In addition to any of the review process, the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables. The applicant will supply said tables through an architect or engineer licensed in the State of New York. And whereas pursuant to the City of Middletown Code, Chapter 475, Article 4, Administration and Enforcement, Section 475-53, Paragraph E6, unless work is commenced and diligently prosecuted within six months of the completed... And completed within two years of the date of the granting of this special use permit, such special use permit shall be null and void. And just so you know, Mr. Al-Rahani, you'll be receiving a letter in your packet and the approval that'll also be stating that. So it's not... Won't be a surprise. It'll be in a letter sent to you.
Okay.
All right.
I understand.
All right. On that resolution, I need a motion. Ms. Houston makes a motion. A second, Mr. Higby. Discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
Yes.
And Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you, Mr. Al-Rahani. Please get with the DPW, Middletown Fire Department, get the proper permits.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the Planning Board, and you guys have a nice evening.
Same to you. Thank you. Next on the agenda, Oscar Sosa-Arelano, 259 East Main Street Restaurant. Are you here, sir? Step up to the podium, please, sir. And you can remove your mask if you'd like while you're in there, yes? And I hope I didn't ruin your name. So what do you plan on doing, sir?
Restaurant, taqueria. We're planning to open from 9:00 to 10:00, seven days a week.
Okay.
That's 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.?
9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., yes.
Okay. Ms. Tu, do we have his mailings? Okay. Then we're going to open the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. Anyone on the telephone, Ms. Tu? Anything in writing? Ms. Hanson, do we have anybody online?
Not at... Wait.
Okay, thank you. In that case, I will go to the board for any questions, comments, or concerns. Ms. Houston?
Are you planning on serving alcohol?
Not right now.
Okay.
Right now, only food. In the future, maybe.
Anyone else? Mr. Britto?
Do we have to waive parking? Is this in the...
Yes, I think we have to waive parking. It's in the proper zone. Yes, we have to waive parking. Mr. Madden?
Would a customer who's dining in your restaurant have to walk through the kitchen to get to a bathroom?
Not really. There is a hole to... The bathroom is in the back, but they don't have to get in the kitchen.
So the kitchen will be separate from that hallway? Thank you.
I'm sure the DPW will follow up on that. Anything else from the board?
Mr. Atkins or Mr. Welch, anything?
We're okay with it. It's got a brand-new fire alarm, brand-new commercial cooking hood that was installed by the previous tenant, so it's in good shape.
Fantastic. We'll go back to the public hearing one more time. Anyone present wishing to step forward, comment on the application? Ms. Hanson, anyone online?
Yes, we do. We have a Ms. Larissa Velez Jackson. You just have to unmute yourself to be able to ask your question.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Jackson?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, I just... Okay, great. I did have a question. I know you mentioned the parking, but, yes, I was concerned about... I know there's on the East Main Street, there are two-hour parking available, and just inquiring about what would be done if, you know, extra cars are blocking driveways, like the two active driveways that are kind of close to the business. Just more so... I don't know if there's a really clear question there, but is there a plan or consideration about parking?
There is none. There is street parking available. If someone breaks the law, then law enforcement would have to be brought in as far as blocking a driveway or parking too long.
Got it, okay. And then another... Only other question is with the seven days until the time was 10:00 p.m.?
Yes, that's what the gentleman stated, yes. 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Were they planning to have music or loud kind of sound happening every evening at that time, or are there any thought given to that?
No. We are not planning to have music.
The applicant has stated no music.
Okay, great.
But again, that would be up to the police to enforce it as well if the music was loud.
Correct. We do have noise ordinances in effect that can be upheld.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Jackson, just for the record, state your name again and your address, please.
Sure. Larissa Velez Jackson, and I'm at 267 East Main.
Thank you.
Property owner. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else online, Ms. Hanson?
Not at this time.
Okay. Then I'm going to close the public hearing. Go back to the board one more time for any questions, comments, or concerns.
Again, this is another restaurant, so the Department of Health...
Will be included in the resolution.
Submit plans to the Department of Health.
Right. Pardon me?
We already have the application. We've had the best inspector came in.
Okay. All right, good. Excellent. It's part of the resolution. You'll have to end up doing it anyway. Good, thank you. All right. Close the public hearing. Went to the board. Any more... Anybody else from the board? Okay. On a resolution for 259 East Main Street Restaurant, we're going to waive parking. There is street parking available. The hours are going to be daily, and I did have a question because on your application, you'd said 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., but you did state 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Is it 9:00 a.m. you would prefer?
9:00 a.m., yeah.
Okay. So then, on the resolution for the record, it'll be 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And of course, it'll be subject to the Middletown DPW, City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, the approval of Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits and follow the permitting process, codes, and ordinances of the City of Middletown, the State of New York, and the County of Orange, if applicable. In addition, if throughout any of the review process, the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, the applicant will supply said tables through an architect or engineer licensed in the State of New York. And whereas pursuant to the City of Middletown Code, Chapter 475, Article 4, Administration and Enforcement, Section 475-53, Paragraph E6, unless work is commenced and diligently prosecuted within six months of the completed... And completed within two years of the date of the granting of special use permit, such special use permit shall be null and void. And you will get a letter with your packet explaining that, okay?
Okay.
I need a motion. Mr. Madden, I need a second. Ms. Witt? Discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
Yes.
And Mr. Higby?
Yes.
I vote yes. Get with the DPW for your permits, and good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Next on the agenda, Chelsea... Chelsea? Chelsea? Bernstein, Inc., 15 James P. Kelly Way, and this is Medical Spa. Good evening. State your names for the record, please.
Chelsea Bernstein.
Brian Bernstein.
And what's your intentions? What are you planning on?
So we're already a mostly established medical spa. We were out of Phoenix Salon Suites for a year and a half, and then decided to make the leap and go into a bigger space.
Okay. Ms. Tu, do we have the mailings?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And in that case, I'm going to open the public hearing. Do anyone here present wishing to speak to this application, please step forward. Ms. Tu, do we have anything in writing? Anyone on the telephone? Ms. Hanson, do we have anyone online?
Not at this time.
Okay. Then I'll go to the board for any questions, comments, or concerns. Just so everyone knows...
Dave has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dave. No, no, I see. Go ahead.
Can you just kind of give us a brief of what a medical spa is and what it entails?
Yes, so a medical spa, it kind of is a hybrid between a day spa and a medical facility. So I'm a registered nurse. I'm also a licensed esthetician. I've been a licensed esthetician for 13 years, and in 2020, I graduated from Mount St. Mary with my Bachelor's in Science in Nursing to advance my scope of practice in skin. And I partnered with my medical director. She is a nurse practitioner with full autonomy in New York State. So that's how we're able to operate as nurses, is she direct... We operate under her license and under her malpractice insurance. So that little hybrid, it kind of makes the medical facility more welcoming, more warm, a more calm environment, not so like sterile, but we do facial treatments and injectables.
Thank you.
That's exactly what I was going to bring up. Thank you. No, she's classified as a medical spa. She is... We have her certificates as a registered nurse. We also have her nurse practitioner's licenses to prove, because she has... She can't operate without that. You did mention cosmetology. Cosmetology. We'll need that certificate also.
Oh, esthetician.
Yes.
Okay. So I... Under the... I will absolutely provide it.
Yeah.
But it's not like with what we do, it's not necessarily... Like my other nurses that work for us, there's only one who's a licensed esthetician. The others are just registered nurses.
Okay.
But we operate under the scope of practice of the registered nurse.
Okay.
It shows that like extra that I'm an esthetician.
Do they have to submit licenses for all the employees that work there?
Well, not for all of them, but they have to have them displayed so that when the inspectors come in, anyone that works there has to have be licensed, right?
Yep, absolutely.
All right, we'll go back to the public. Anyone here wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. Ms. Hanson, do we have anyone else online?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Walter and Theron, any comments?
We've both been out there. Everything's fine. Fully sprinkled, fully fire alarm. It's a nice-looking space.
Thank you.
Any issue with parking?
They have their own parking lot, so we don't have to waive parking. It's all part of that facility that was approved years ago with Sterling Park.
All right. I'm sorry, Mr....
I'm not sure if it's just a formality or whatever, but... And I don't know how important it is, but the owner's endorsement that we have is is not from the owner of the...
I have it for you.
Oh, did you update it? Oh, good. I didn't know if it would be a big...
But... No, no, no. I think she sent in the proper one.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, she's not the owner of the property.
So are you keeping the same company name? Are you changing your name of your business, or...
So I am Chelsea Bernstein, Inc. I guess I can explain the formalities. Technically, I am not legally allowed to own my own spa because I am a registered nurse. Rhonda owns the spa.
Okay.
We have contract agreements for our partnership. So her DBA... So her business is Rhonda DiAgostino, Inc. Her DBA is Rev Facial Bar. I am the management company for the spa, but all... She is the medically responsible. I am the financially responsible, so the lease agreement is under my name.
Okay, thank you. So it'd be called Rev...
Rev, R-E-V as in Victor, Rev Facial Bar. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. Went back to the board. I think we're ready for a resolution. Resolution on 15 James P. Kelly Way Medical Spa with hours of operation Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Saturday and Sunday, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Is that correct? Okay, good. And you'll be subject to the City of Middletown DPW, City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits and follow the permitting process, codes, and ordinances of the City of Middletown, the State of New York, which will mean your licenses, and the County of Orange, if applicable. In addition, if throughout any of the review process, the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, the applicant will supply said tables through an architect or engineer licensed in the State of New York. Also, whereas pursuant to the City of Middletown Code, Chapter 475, Article 4, Administration and Enforcement, Section 475-53, Paragraph E6, unless work is commenced and diligently prosecuted within six months and completed within two years of the date of the granting of this special use permit, such special use permit shall be null and void. All right? I need a motion. Ms. Witt, I need a second. Mr. Higby, discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Get with the DPW and the Middletown Fire Department. Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck. Next on the agenda, Abraham Rothman, 35 Dulson Avenue Warehouse/Distribution Facility. Good evening, gentlemen. State your name for the record, please.
My name is Avon Rothman.
Sinai Halberstam.
And please tell us what your intentions are, gentlemen.
We're planning to first thank you for your time and for the fire inspector coming down, and Ms. Tu to help me with everything. We are planning to do light distribution. We're selling online, and we have our... Just shipping from there out to Amazon warehouses.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Tu, we have the mailings? Okay. Give me just one minute. Ms. Hanson, do we have anyone online?
You didn't open the public hearing.
We have.
I was waiting for the mailings. I know we have them, but...
We do have someone online listening about the project.
Okay, just ask them to be patient. We're working something out.
Of course.
Can I interrupt a moment? Ms. Tu, do we have the mailings, correct? I have to do that for the record. Do we have any written comments on this application? No one on the telephone? Okay, great. I can open the public hearing now. Anyone present wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. Okay, Ms. Hanson, anyone online?
They're listening. They just want to know more about the scope of the project.
Scope of the project, okay. I think the gentleman described it as a small, light warehousing distribution center for online store shipping, and it sounds like their main customer is Amazon.
What's the hours of operation?
Monday to Friday, Friday from 8:00 till 5:00. At 5:00, we're packing up and going home.
Okay, yeah. And your application at 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.? It's going to be 8:00 to 5:00 instead?
Usually, the guys leave at 5:00. Sometimes, they stay around until 6:00, but operations...
Well, you're better off leaving at 6:00 p.m. This way, if you had that little leeway.
Okay, thank you.
And what days of the week?
Monday through Friday, you said.
No Saturday and Sunday? What size trucks are going to be there?
90% of the trucks are regular box trucks. We have one company, Central Pet. They come with a little bit of bigger truck.
What would be the frequency of your deliveries or pickups?
We have usually pickups once or twice a week, and delivery is same, once or twice a week.
Will the trucks be idling?
No.
Or pickup and go?
Pickup and they leave.
Okay. Just to keep you informed, there's a New York State idling law. I forget, I think, is it three minutes, Mr. Higbee? Five minutes? So if they're going to be parked there longer than that, you need to shut them down. Okay?
Yes.
We're all going to try to be good neighbors.
Definitely.
Ms. Hanson, does that answer that person's questions at all?
Yes, they do have two more. What is the current use and is there need for renovations?
Current use?
Was a mechanic.
It was a mechanic shop. Can you, can she hear that?
Yes.
Okay, mechanic. And what's the other question? I'm sorry.
Is there need for renovations? And how many employees?
I have five employees written down here. Correct? And renovations, little to none.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay. I'll go to the board now for any questions or comments, concerns? Nothing? Okay. There is a, just so everyone knows in the packet, there is a parking lot there. It's very difficult to mark that parking lot because it's all dirt and gravel. But our DPW and Fire Department know it exists. Know there's been, you know, a few problems in the past. But they'll keep an eye on it. We don't expect you to line it or mark it, but they'll just keep an eye on the number of cars.
We'll try in the future. Once we're there, we'll make pavements, but not now.
That'd be fine, yeah. Well, I hope you're successful enough to pave it.
Hope so.
Are the deliveries from Dulson Bennett or Byron? Like where?
Do it whatever you guys want, but I think the best is on Bennett.
On Bennett?
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't think they can do it any other way. All right. Back to the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. Ms. Hanson, anyone else online?
No, no further questions.
Great. We'll close the public hearing. Up, Mr. Atkins, you have a comment?
Yeah, sorry. The building inspector and I did do a site visit. And just so you get it clear, they're only taking that one space in the front. All the other tenants are staying in place. And the auto detail shop is staying in place. We did address the issue about the parking lot. And I've been assured that it's going to get cleaned up, organized a little bit better. And some of the machine shop items in the back are going to get cleaned up, right? So we're good. It's fully sprinkled building, fully fire alarm.
As the resolution states, as per the ordinances and codes of the City of Middletown. Okay?
Are you the owners of the building?
Yes.
What is the name of your company? Are you going to display your company name on there?
Just going to put a small sign on the mailbox. We don't need, we don't have customers coming and going.
Okay, so you're not going to be open to the public at all?
No.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. On the resolution for 35 Dulson Avenue Warehouse/Distribution Facility, hours of operation will be Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Be subject to the City of Middletown DPW and City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of Commissioner Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits and follow the permitting processes, codes, and ordinances of the City of Middletown, the State of New York, and the County of Orange if applicable. In addition, if throughout any of the review process, the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, the applicant will supply said tables through an architect or engineer licensed in the state of New York. Also, whereas pursuant to the City of Middletown Code, Chapter 475, Article 4, Administration and Enforcement, Section 475-53, Paragraph E 6, unless work is commenced and diligently prosecuted within six months and completed within two years of the date of granting of a special use permit, such special use permit shall be null and void. I need a resolu, I need a motion. Ms. Houston, I need a second. Mr. Britto. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
This is based upon what they've represented the traffic flow to be. If the traffic flow increases from their facility, would we need to have a traffic study or anything?
I guess that would be greatly depend upon the flow. There is another company that adjoins them, Hershey Ice Cream, which has traffic flow. So I'm not sure, you know, how we would do that, how we would gauge that.
It just seems to me that if their business grows tremendously, they took over the whole spot and they had a lot of traffic coming in and out with trucks and being so close to a main street there, I don't know if that would impact the traffic flow.
Well, good point, though, is that if their business grows and they take over more of the building, they'll have to come back to us anyway to represent the growth or the taking over of that building.
Okay.
So I think at that time, we're going to have to address the traffic issue.
Okay.
Do you understand that?
Hundred percent.
Great. Okay, we hope you do well. Anything else? Ms. Houston, do you have some question or?
Oh, no. I like that you brought that up. I was just thinking that the same thing, they have to come back.
Yep. All right. So roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Higbee?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Get with the DPW.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, the Detroit Bowling Company, 14 to 22 Cottage Street. This is amendment of the existing special use site plan to allow cooking on the premise. Good evening, sir. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Thomas Room.
And please state your intentions. What do you plan on doing?
We want to increase our food menu.
That's pretty simple, huh?
Yes.
All right, so you're going to be cooking on premise?
Correct. Right now, we kind of basically reheat food. And now we want to actually prepare
Gotcha.
some items fresh in our facility.
Excellent. Ms. Tu, do we have our mailings? Do we have any, are we going to open the public hearing? Ms. Tu, do we have any written comments? Anyone on the telephone? Ms. Hanson, we have anyone online?
Not at this time.
Okay. Anyone present wishing to step forward and comment on the application? Then we'll move to the board for any questions, comments, or concerns. Ms. Witt?
Who is preparing your food? Who's going to be preparing the food and serving the food?
We're going to have somebody that will be dedicated to our food services.
Okay, so you're going to have a cook?
Chef, yeah.
A chef? And then who's going to be serving the food? So is a bartender going to be serving the food as well as preparing drinks and getting money? And I noticed from your schematic that where your concession stand is, where is actually your bar in your?
That is the bar area.
That is the bar area. And where, so you want to put the food prep right next to where the bar area is?
Correct.
Okay. Is there going to be seating at the bar for food as well as for drink? Or is it just?
It's a kind of a combination setting.
Okay.
We also have tables that are arranged in the other areas of the space that, you know, people would be able to eat there as well.
Okay.
Anyone else from the board? We'll go back to the public hearing. Ms. Hanson, do we have anyone online?
We do not.
We're going to close the public hearing. Go back to the board one more time for questions, comments, or concerns.
Mr. Atkins or Mr. Welch?
They're shaking their heads. All good.
Sorry, no comments. The transcriptionist can't see that. Okay, thanks.
Again, this is another restaurant, Department of Health.
Yeah. You have to notify the Department of Health. Send them a plan.
Yeah, we have.
I know you're an existing facility, but would you mind sharing your hours of operation with us, please?
Funny that you asked that. I had a feeling you were going to ask that.
Okay.
I know that we're on the record for later than what we are currently post-COVID or.
Okay. That's fine. You can give us what's on the record.
Operating at right now. But what I wanted to do for the board was kind of give you an idea as to what our food was going to be. Because we're open a little bit later on some of these days. But I want to concentrate from an operational perspective as to like when our food is going to be ready. So we're thinking what we would like to do, like to propose is 5:00 to 9:00 o'clock, Monday through Thursday, 2:00 to 10:00 o'clock on Fridays, because we open a little bit early on Fridays, noon to 10:00 o'clock on Saturdays, and noon to 9:00 o'clock on Sundays.
And are those hours less than what you have on the record already?
Yes, sir.
All right. You've already stated them for the record. I'm not going to put them in the resolution. They're also controlled by the DMU zone. You can't go and pass a certain time Monday through Thursday anyway, past midnight. And you fall, all these hours fall within those parameters, so we're okay. The only other thing we do, just so the board knows, is have to waive parking. They are in the DMU zone. And then there'll be a little bit extra added to the application or to the resolution when I state it. Okay? If you have any questions, you can always ask.
Thank you.
All right. No further questions. Closed public hearing. Onto the board and, all right. On a resolution for the Detroit Bowling Company, 14 to 22 Cottage Street, amendment to the existing special use permit plan to allow cooking on the premise. Hours of operation are on the record as already already established. Subject to the City of Middletown DPW, City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of Commissioner Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits, follow the permitting process, codes, and ordinances of the City of Middletown, the State of New York, and the County of Orange if applicable. In addition, if throughout any of the review process, the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, the applicant will supply said tables through an architect or engineer licensed in the state of New York. Whereas, this application is located in the DMU zone. Applicants must submit and receive approval from Department of Public Works according to Chapter 407 Solid Waste, Article 3 Collection, Section 407-3 Collection, and comply with this section and any other sections enacted by the common council from this date forward. Also, whereas pursuant to the City of Middletown Code, Chapter 475, Article 4, Administration and Enforcement, Section 475-53, Paragraph E 6, unless work is commenced and diligently prosecuted within six months and completed within two years of the date of the granting of special use permit, such special use permit shall be null and void. I added the thing about the garbage collection, waste collection. It is now, and the common council has enacted a code that you must supply them a waste collection plan. Go to DPW, they'll help you along with that. It's brand new since you've been in operation. All right, just so you know.
Okay.
I need a motion. Mr. Britto, I need a second. Mr. Madden?
Do we have to include in the resolution Architectural Review Board?
Yes. I apologize. You're correct. You must.
Mr. Chairman, in addition, are they changing the use to eating and drinking from recreation?
That's what they're amending, in my opinion.
Do we have to make that as part of the resolution?
We could. I can reread it as a, it's an amending from a recreational to a eating establishment.
Eating and drinking.
Eating and drinking establishment, right.
And they'll comply with the?
The codes of the SLA, State Liquor Authority, which you probably do already, but further.
Where, my understanding is we are required to serve food.
That is correct.
And that's how we originally presented to the board.
It probably goes back, like I said, to his original approval. He's still, he's still under his original approval. He's now making the food himself rather than running the food.
But before it was classified as recreation, is it now being changed to eating and drinking?
I don't see why not. The issue is, does that take them away from a recreational?
No, I think it's an ancillary use.
Okay. And both are permitted, so we would be okay. All right. I'm sorry, Mr. Madden, did we answer the question? Oh, no, you were Architectural Review Board? Yes. The transcriptionist will add, you must follow the architectural, go through Architectural Review Board for any facade changes or sign changes that you're going to do in the facility.
And that's exterior to the building?
Correct.
I don't think, we don't have anything at this point.
According to your application, there was none. But in case you do, you'll have to go before the Architectural Review Board to do so.
I remember that from before.
Okay. I didn't.
Anything outside.
Yes, correct. All right, let's try that. Hope everybody has in there what they want. And need a motion? Mr. Britto, second. Mr. Higbee? Discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Higbee?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Good luck.
Thank you. I'm going to head out and get some food now.
And a little recreation? All right. Motion to adjourn. Mr. Madden, second. Ms. Witt? All in favor?
Aye.